Madam Vice Chair Bailey, I see we have Commissioner Washington and we have Commissioner Geraldo today. We start with our administrative and other items today this morning, and then at 11 o'clock sharp, we will go into our development review items. First order of business is item two, the draft minutes from the planning board meeting of October the 8th, 2020.
Move approval, Madam Chair. Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Washington, second by Vice Chair Bailey. All in favor, Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
And I should have said, this is the planning board session for Thursday, October the 15th, for those, for the sake of our archives, and it's our 24th virtual meeting since March. We will now go to item 3C, which is our corporate budget presentation. And we're going to start off, Mr. Kroll, are you starting?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Thank you.
For the record, John Kroll, Corporate Budget Director. Couple opening remarks before we get into the departmental presentations. One, this is the next step along the path toward the development of the proposed budget for fiscal year 22. Any of the numbers that you appear today are, some of them are subject to change, in particular, the personnel numbers, because they include pension and per headcount tab, and those are based on, as we noted in the previous presentations, they are based on actuarial valuations, and those will be the new valuations of the outcome first week of November, so that might move some of those numbers. Also, you should have received an updated packet reflecting changes to the CIO's presentation this morning, so hopefully you have that.
Yes, we're just getting that. I don't know if they were in time, distributed in time to the board, because, you know, they were sent yesterday to the board, or the day before, Tuesday, to the board, so I don't know that they have it. I have mine. Okay.
Either way, Mazin will speak to those, to that, when his time is up. With that, if there are no preliminary questions, jump right into it, and the first presentation is from the Prince George's County Planning Board, and that'd be Robert Clark.
Mr. Clark, you are on. Mr. Clark? Okay. He doesn't, he's not talking, though. Yes, but he's not moving his mouth, so I'm sorry. Okay, so we're going to pass over Mr. Clark.
And so we're moving then to the planning department, and that would be probably Terry Johnson and Andre Checkley.
Okay, good morning, Madam Chair, right members of the board. This is Terry Johnson, I am the Budget Manager for the Prince George's County Planning Department. I will start off my presentation. The packet that you received today, or early this week, starting on page five, is where the planning department starts. Our proposed budget for FY22 will continue to be built around values of the department, which are valuing our employees, striving for planning excellence, making investments, and collaborating.
Hold on, hold on. Everyone else needs to be muted. Mute your phones. Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson, you may continue.
Okay, sorry about that. Like I said, our budget is proposed around our values, which, right now, it's unmuted.
Everyone else needs to mute. Everyone else needs to mute, because we are now on Terry Johnson. Thank you.
Okay. Which is built around valuing our employees, striving for planning excellence, and making investments, collaborating with taxpayers, residents, and citizens.
Mute everybody.
To be brief.
No, mute everybody. Mute everybody except for Terry Johnson. Mr. Johnson, can you unmute yourself now, please? Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Got you.
Thank you. Okay, because we need, some people were cutting into your time, so I'm sorry about that. Okay.
No problem. If you all move to page seven of your packet, there's a summary chart there that outlines the proposed changes to our work program for FY22. You will note, the department is proposing a modest increase of $858,746, which is a 2.24% increase above the adopted 25 budget. This request, this budget includes a request for three new full-time career positions that will support the recreation of a research section in the planning department. In your packet, I also provide a description of the duties that will be entailed in that new research section. Our FY21 budget also includes, excuse me, our FY21 budget included a one-time cost associated with the purchase of new office systems, furniture, and cubicles. These dollars go away, so this will result in a decrease to our supplies and materials budget of roughly about $1 million in FY22. And as far as COVID-related, we have included funding in our supplies and materials budget for PPE. This includes feral masks, disinfecting solutions, and Plexiglas barriers to protect our open-facing work areas at both the county administration building and our Lakeside offices. We are proposing an increase of approximately $1.2 million in funding for professional and consulting services. This will assist the department in providing new consulting professional dollars for new and continuing work programs being proposed for FY22. On page nine of your packet, I've quoted some of those new work programs that will be requiring consulting service dollars next year. There's also a proposed increase of $187,500 for countywide mailings anticipated for the countywide MAP amendment. There's a proposed increase of $225,000 for one-time costs associated with space planning and design for the eventual relocation of the planning department. There's an $80,000 increase that is somewhat COVID-related for the purchase of additional Microsoft 365 licenses. This includes E5 licenses as well as calling plans, and we hope that this will improve the department's communication, communicating efficiencies for staff that are working remotely from home. There's a $64,000 increase for commission-wide IT initiatives. I believe Mazin will discuss this a little further in his presentation, what some of these commission-wide IT initiatives are. And there's a $25,100 increase for the rental of office space at the county administration building pursuant to our lease agreement with the county. And finally, there's a net decrease of $295,000 for capital equipment, and this is due to one-time costs that were included in our FY21 budget. To conclude, we will be coming back to the board in the near future to present an update to the planning department's six-year program for master plans and studies, and we will also be coming back to the board on November 5th to submit our final submission on our FY22 budget. This will include more detail on all of the new work programs that we'll be proposing for FY22, and a full listing of all of our work programs. And that'll conclude my presentation. I open for any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, and I apologize for the confusion when we called upon you. So let's see if the board has any questions for you at this time. Madam Vice Chair? No questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Just one question, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the reduction in office furniture for over $1 million. Is that because we're not making the move yet?
That's exactly right. We included that money in our adopted 21 budget, but of course, that didn't happen, and we do not anticipate it happening in FY22 either, so it was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And where are we? Commissioner Washington?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're going to try this again. We're going to go to Rob Clark for the planning board's presentation. So we're going to unmute here, and then you unmute there as well. Okay, so you're on.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry for the earlier hiccup.
Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. The Prince George's County Planning Board Office, this budget may be found, as you probably already know, on pages one through four. For the record, my name is Robert Clark, Budget Coordinator, from the Prince George's County Planning Board Office. We are proposing a budget which increases expenditures just under 1% above the current 21 approved budget. Most of this increase originates in the personal services classification and results from both the increase in health insurance and the benefit mix chosen by employees. Also, as usual, per our agreement with the county, the lease for fourth-floor office space in the county administration building will result in a 3% increase. All other non-personal classifications will remain at 21 levels. If you turn to page two, there's a quick summary of our budget by major object class. Explanations, personal services, quickly, the compensation mark, as you probably know, is not included in the departmental budgets. The personnel services budget is about 1.5% above the current 21 approved total, and this, again, varies from increases in health insurance and the benefit mix chosen by employees. The only other increase we have is the 3% increase, which results in a 0.35% increase in that other services and charges classification. Also, as I like to note on a annual basis, about a third of our budget, 1.1 million, results from a project charge that's payable to the county council for their planning and zoning functions that they perform on our behalf. If you turn to page three, that simply just details the changes in our budget request of $33,219. And finally, if you change the page four, it's a listing of our personnel complement. We have two vacancies in the budget, and our funded career positions remain at 16.5. That would be the end of my presentation. I will leave you with a happy.
Okay, can you mute me for a second? Can you tell me why we got a sideways presentation? But okay, all right, you can unmute me. Okay. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Clark. Okay, so let's see if there's any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So we'll now turn, I guess we're going to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Ms. Ford, and Mr. Tyler, that's Director Tyler, let's go with you first. This is your first budget, budget presentation for us, so we are all ears.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, Bill Tyler, the proud director of the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, Prince George's County. So before we present our budget strategy, I'd like to take a few minutes to first thank you and the planning board for your guidance, trust, and support during these stressful and uncertain times. With the onset of COVID-19, the last eight months have been anything but normal, and I want to thank our awesome staff for their nimbleness, innovation, toughness, and relentless pursuit to keep our wonderful residents of Prince George's County engaged during these challenging times. We provided diverse virtual programs, along with modified in-person opportunities for residents to participate in exciting leisure activities. Our parks and trails are getting unprecedented use, and our park staff haven't missed a beat. Our park police continue to offer outstanding services and protection for all of us. We have the greatest staff in the world, and I truly believe that. And we will continue to be responsible stewards of the fiscal and physical resources you've entrusted to us, so thank you for this opportunity to present today.
Thank you. What a wonderful presentation. Thank you, Director. We appreciate that. Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Melissa Ford, operating budget manager for the Department of Parks and Recreation. We can begin on page 12 of the package that is before you. In correcting this budget, the department has seven strategies we are implementing in FY22. The first relates to our capital improvement program. Staff will rank proposed FY22 through FY27 CIP plans for planning this December. The goals and strategies in the CIP will focus on three key factors. One, financial sustainability. Two, maintaining the existing infrastructure. And three, ensuring that staff capacity is sufficient to deliver the CIP work program. The department has deployed a feasibility study methodology to assess for renovations and new facilities. This methodology will allow the department to propose CIP projects with greater clarity and understanding of the desired service delivery goals and financial cost. The cost to conduct each of these feasibility studies is included in the CIP. However, the budget impact of choosing to move forward on any particular project has not been determined, and as such, is not included in the CIP. The second strategy focuses on analyzing our workforce. In recent history, the department has experienced significant levels of staff retirements and also room turnover. To ensure service continuity, we are identifying critical to fill positions and analyzing how our vacancies can meet present-day operational needs. We will continue our efforts to refocus positions to optimize our workforce complement and our overall ability to deliver services and desired outputs. Our third strategy, beginning on page 13 of your memo, encompasses reviewing the base budget and strategically using FY21 budget savings. We are scrutinizing our non-personnel needs, along with removing any one-time funding that was included in FY21. It is our intention to utilize FY21 year-end savings to procure certain one-time divisional requests that could not be accommodated in our FY22 proposal. The fourth strategy focuses on trails and infrastructure maintenance. The department will place significant focus on the maintenance of our paved and natural surface trails throughout the county. We will develop a comprehensive plan to make upgrades and critical repairs to the trail system, along with improving masks and signage for our trail patrons. In addition, the department will make continued investments to maintaining the existing infrastructure that supports our vast and varied recreational programs. And speaking of programs, the fifth strategy centers on innovative programming. We are committed to delivering innovative programs that meet the needs of county residents in the post-COVID-19 environment. We will explore opportunities to enhance our virtual programming and strengthen our community outreach and partnerships throughout the county. FY22 will also feature our continued efforts to expand the offerings within our new youth and countywide sports division. Our sixth strategy is all about conservation and sustainability. The department will continue the implementation of our sustainability plan, with key elements focused on pesticide reduction and the overall protection of the county's environmental resources. Our seventh and final strategy highlights our focus on public safety. Public safety, as measured by Parkland crimes, has reached historic lows in the parks and recreation system. We feel strongly that this positive outcome is due to sustained investment in the park police and a commitment to the community policing model. The department remains committed to ensuring the safety of all residents and patrons when visiting and using our open spaces and facilities. Our park police will maintain their focus on crime prevention and civic engagement by way of programs and collaborative community partnerships. That does end my presentation, and we are open to answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Let's see if we have any questions thus far. You know, some of us may have comments at the very end, but let me just see if there's any immediate questions. Vice Chair Bailey?
No questions at this time. I thank you for the presentation.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
I have a question. It's not necessarily related to the budget, but what is our current stance on masks at our parks right now? Are they required?
When you say masks, are they required for users, are you saying, are they required for our staff?
Well, for both, but in particular, users.
Yes. Well, outdoors, it is an option, if you're outdoors, to use masks, but we do like to see and encourage people to keep their mask on regardless.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tyler. I just happened to be at Watkins Park this weekend, and there were several people without masks, so I was just curious about what the protocol is for that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions. I want to thank everyone for their presentation thus far.
Thank you so much. Okay. Okay, good job, Ms. Ford. Okay, so next, we have, we're going to Central Administrative Services. Are we going to start with you, Madam Executive Director? Who's starting? We have to unmute you. Hold on a second. Okay, you're unmuted on our end.
Okay, can you hear me to back?
Yes.
Okay, great, great. Thank you very much, Chair Hewitt. Thank you to the planning board. You know, as my colleague Bill Tyler mentioned, this has really been just an unprecedented year at CAS. Our whole sole purpose is to ensure that we are able to continue the mission of the commission while making sure, ensuring that our employees and our patrons are safe and healthy. And I think the budget that you will see before you reflects that. As we mentioned, it has just been an unprecedented year. Our labor relations team has been in negotiations with the union nonstop, with different MOUs that have come before you with respect to health and safety of our workers, and I greatly, greatly appreciate the partnership in helping us work through these and approving all these measures as we've been going through it almost month to month. What I wanted to talk about maybe is a few things that are new. I don't want it to feel that this pandemic is defining the commission, so there are a few things that we have proposed that are going to propel our commission forward, and I just wanted to talk about it briefly. There's three measures that are going to strengthen the commission. The first one is going to be setting up a performance management system. We're working with economists at Tassie University to put together a return on investment study, and then from that, figure out what are the things that make sense to measure, and then put together a system so that we can measure our accomplishments and our efforts in a very quantitative way that also has meaning to our patrons. So we will be setting up that system this year, which is pretty exciting. The second thing we're going to do is, we have Montgomery College working with us on a comprehensive succession planning study for the coal commission. And what this will achieve is, it'll help us see where we have bench strength and where we have some deficits, and where, if there's certain types of training we need to provide across the commission, if there's certain specialized ones, so that we are going to strategically ensure that we have bench strength for the years to come, to ensure our mission is going forward, and that our employees and our people have what they need to succeed. The third initiative is going to be a commission-wide corporate communications study. Right now, as you may know, corporate does not have a communications person. That falls on my shoulders, and we have learned through the pandemic that coordinating our communications works really well. So during the pandemic, twice a week, I would have meetings with our communications team to make sure we all know what is going on throughout the commission in both Prince George's and Montgomery Counties, and that we are utilizing the same messages across the commission. This has worked really well, so what we are going to do is look with this consultant, what it is that we are putting forth to our patrons and anyone that views our website, social media, and see if that message matches up to what it is indeed we are wanting to communicate. And then we will work strategically on ensuring that those messages are coordinated, that there is no confusion, and that we're putting forward the best message possible. Finally, we are asking for one position, and this position would be with our labor relations team. What we have right now is, we have a Director of Labor Relations position. That position right now is being filled. Our Labor Relations Manager successfully was recruited to go over to Parks and Recreation, so we are filling that role, and we have two additional colleagues who work in that department. So that's only three people that handle all the corporate labor relations, any kind of conflict, any kind of training across the commission. We added additional person because we are finding that not only with the pandemic, but with the civil unrest, with people's anxiety about police forces, and also with their anxiety about outcomes either way with the elections, that there is just a lot of chaos. And what we need is somebody who is dedicated to training, to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion, as well as handle a swelling in a number of the cases. We would like to be able to address those cases before they become grievances. So we're requesting the one additional person who would then, moving forward, be somebody who would help us with this diversity, equity, and inclusion training throughout the commission, as well as address cases, and hopefully relieve some of these pressures and these discrepancies before they get to the grievance. I thank you very much, and I turn it over to my colleague Katie Knappi to go through the rest of the budget. Thank you.
Okay, so let me ask you this question. So I have other folks, so Katie's going to, I didn't have her down to talk. I had John Kroll next, but is he, is Mr. Kroll speaking too?
Not at this time.
Okay, all right, so, okay, so, all right, we can go forward then. Okay.
Good morning. Katie Knappi, Budget and Management Operations Chief for the Department of Human Resources and Management. I'm going to quickly go through the DHRM Support Services and Mayor Board budgets.
Okay.
The DHRM, oh, what was that? The DHRM proposed highlights begin on page 17, and the proposed base budget is $5,668,365, which is a 0.4% decrease of just over $21,000. And this is due to some agencies for subscription costs that are being transferred over to SEWIT that have been historically paid by DHRM. We've also adjusted some of our chargebacks. Most of our chargebacks are allocations of DHRM staff time that can be directly correlated to work in another department or fund. And for FY22, we're proposing staff time allocations to the group insurance and risk management funds through chargebacks. In prior years, these were collected through a direct expense, but this just brings continuity to the way we allocate all of DHRM staff time. We also have chargebacks for expenses that, or programs that are run by DHRM that have direct impact in the departments, like Park Police Promotional Testing and Labor Council. We're proposing two new initiatives. The first one, well, these two initiatives bring the budget up about, the proposed budget up about 2% to $5,804,199. The first one is the position that Executive Director Chang Smith discussed, and that's about $108,000. And the second one is the department's contribution of $27,600 to the SEWIT budget for ERP upgrades. With these two proposed requests, the total proposed amount, expense to Prince George's for DHRM would be $3,289,678, which is a 1.8% increase over FY21 budget levels. The next budget is Support Services on page 19, and this budget covers nondiscretionary expenses, shared expenses between by-county departments and units, like document duplication, postage. It also provides archive support. However, the main cost driver for this budget is occupancy expense through rent payments through rent payments to fund the executive office building. And along with Central Administrative Services, the Prince George's Parks and Recreation Information Technology and Communications Division occupies space in EOB. However, they're slated to move out sometime in the spring. And it's presumed that this space would be taken over by a CES department or unit. So the rent for that space has been absorbed into this budget. So with that, it brings a 6.1% increase to the proposed budget of $1,558,75. In addition to that, the rent for EOB is being increased 4% in FY22. The rent hasn't been increased in the past few years, but costs have continued to rise. And this will also help fund the building's COVID-19 response. So to offset this increase in rent, we had planned to purchase shared technology equipment through Support Services, but this expense has been deferred to FY23. That being said, the total proposed expense to Prince George's for Support Services is $865,002, a 6% increase over FY21. And the last budget I quickly want to mention is the Merit Board budget on page twenty. The FY22 proposed budget is $164,610 and reflects a 5.6% decrease of $9,790. And this is due to an adjustment in the way we calculate the personnel expenses for the board members and their administrator. And this budget is split 50/50 between both counties. So the cost to each is $8,205. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, I'm trying to, let me see if I can get this right. So you're, this is page twenty?
Yeah, so it's twenty on the PDF and nineteen on the paper.
Okay, thank you. That's essential because we got the new handout today. So, okay, all right, thank you. Okay, are there any questions of Mr. Knapp, Ms. Knapp? I'm so sorry, Katie, Ms. Knapp? Okay, Madam Vice Chair? Knappi, okay, did I get it wrong? I always say Katie, so what did I get wrong? Say it again?
It's a tricky one, Knappi.
Knappi, okay, so I forgot the E on the end. Okay, Ms. Knappi, okay, thank you. Ms. Bailey, you said no questions?
No questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but I would like to commend Madam Executive Director for being so forward-thinking and strategic, especially in the areas of the communication study and the DEI training. I think that those, all of the initiatives sound wonderful, but those two in particular, I think, are very much needed. So thank you for putting some thought behind that and resources.
Thank you. Commissioner Geraldo? You're muted.
I did owe Commissioner Washington's comments and I have no further questions or comments. Thank you, everybody who's made their presentations today.
Thank you. Okay, who's next?
Next is Finance.
Okay. Is Mr. Zimmerman?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we're good.
Excellent. Good morning.
Good morning.
In these odd and strange circumstances. I believe my memo begins on page six.
It does.
Package?
Well.
And really.
Page twenty-one of the PDF.
Thirty-four, yeah.
Twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the attachment that John provided me, which was just, I think, the budget piece. You'll find that it is a rather unexciting budget request, which fits finances like us, a rather unexciting department.
Story of your life.
If there's excitement in finance, it's just generally not a good thing. We have looked at our staffing levels very carefully and we find that our level of positions is appropriate for what we think our service needs are. However, we are behind in filling positions, which has given us some challenges in meeting the needs and also challenges in improving services going forward. Most especially in accounting, where we have continued to shuffle positions and fill positions internally. And at the moment, we have two senior accountants and an AP lead, accounts payable lead position open. If any of you know a good senior accountant, we would love to talk to them. And that's given us some challenges. We've got a lot of people working real hard right now to get through the audit. And we hope to get some relief later this fall and into the winter by hiring some positions. We have successfully onboarded, just as an aside, largely remotely, a new purchasing person who I met last week for the first time. And that's been an interesting challenge for both her and everyone else. And it appears to be working pretty successfully. My folks have become very adept at finding ways to get the job done. And it's really impressive to watch, watch them work on some of these things and just chew on problems and solve them and move forward. In any case, we have no real significant requests for next year. Major new commitments coupled with chargeback revisions per formulas would result in a 1.2% increase in our budget request. We have asked for a separate line item for employee recognition awards rather than having to look under the sofa cushions for the money for that. And we are supportive of the commission-wide IT initiatives, especially ERP, which we are indeed, you know, we talk a lot about ERP and you would say, didn't we just do that? Well, we came live six years ago with the first modules of ERP and we've continued to improve it. But as our vendor continues to bring out new product levels, et cetera, it's a continuous effort to upgrade, improve, and make it work better. So we're in another planning phase now towards the next phase of ERP, version eleven of INFOR and/or a whole other installation, which probably is not in the cards. With that, I will stop and entertain any questions you might have.
Okay, you know what? I'm going to keep going, Mr. Zimmerman. Thank you for your presentation. I'm going to let you and the legal department finish. And then we'll see if there's any questions. And then we'll go to OIG and CIO, okay?
Your pleasure.
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Gardner, are you on?
I am. I'm trying to turn off camera. There we go.
Memo and twenty-four of the PDF.
Okay, thank you. So your camera is on? I won't see you, but, okay.
I don't know that my camera's on in any of it. I did want to just say good morning to everybody. And the most important thing actually is that I'm going to hand it right over to the person who made this possible, which is Deputy General Counsel Deborah Borden.
Okay, thank you.
Here's Deborah.
Thank you, Ms. Borden.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I'm Deborah Borden, Deputy General Counsel for the Commission. And I'm here to present our truly unexciting budget. You thought finance was unexciting. Well, we're going to top that.
That takes some doing.
We are proposing a whopping 1% increase over FY21. And most of that is due to increased benefit costs, which we cannot avoid. We are not proposing any new positions and any new initiatives. We do, however, intend to fill the vacancies that we have currently. We have two vacancies and we do intend to fill them. We do intend to get all of our teams up to speed in terms of being fully staffed because we are busy. Don't let this budget fool you. The legal department is very busy right now. And so if the planning department has any worries about whether we intend to have three attorneys there, they need not worry. We are working on that. It is difficult during regular times to hire these specialized attorney positions. So during the pandemic, we found that it is actually even harder. So we are working diligently and we do intend to get that team back up to three attorneys as soon as we can. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. And that concludes Legal's presentation.
Thank you so much, Ms. Borden. Again, I have some comments which I'll reserve for the very end. Okay, so Madam Vice Chair, any questions of Ms. Borden or Mr. Zimmerman?
No, but thank you again.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions of legal, but for Mr. Zimmerman, I was interested in knowing what exactly are the chargebacks?
Oh, that is a litany of pieces that we charge, our various internal service funds, enterprise funds, et cetera, because they're required to be self-supporting. So a portion of our costs are allocated out to them. There's a formula set up in place, a regime that's been in effect probably for at least 10 years. It's been tweaked over the years, but generally that's what they are in finance. It's allocations out to the various self-supporting operations. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that's it for the questions. I might add that this pandemic is producing some very interesting new looks that people are sporting, myself included. But there are others, Mr. Zimmerman. Okay. Okay, thank you. So now we're going to Ms. Kenny?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I wish I were to be pleased to hear that I'm going to continue with another unexciting budget proposal. The following budget was presented and discussed at the last quarterly Audit Committee meeting chaired by Vice Chair Commissioner Bailey. My budget is flat. We have this one slight, slight request, $2,500 for some software to help us with our analytics. I can answer any questions? Like I said, very simple.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, any comments?
No, no questions, but they do an outstanding job and the leadership is just absolutely amazing. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Washington?
No, I just echo Madam Vice Chair's sentiments. Thank you, Renee.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions. Same comments as my commissioners.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Chilay? Okay, we got your ten-page PowerPoint here. This morning. So, Mr. Chilay, are you on? There he is. Okay.
Yes, thank you for muting me. Good morning, Madam Chair and respected commissioners.
Good morning.
My memo starts on page twenty-seven, but I'll be looking after the slides that you should be seeing on the screen hopefully shortly.
Are you doing it or are we doing it?
My camera is not.
Are you doing the PowerPoint? Huh?
I am. I was hoping that I see it on the screen.
But I'm asking, so you're lying, you're doing it now? I'm asking Mr. Plant again? Okay. This, this. Hold on a second because we had to insert that this morning. Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay, Mr. Chilay?
Okay, thank you. If you want the next slide, please. And before we get started, I would like to point out that the modified manual memo that was sent earlier today reflects consensus support for all initiatives from all departments yesterday. So I apologize for the late delivery, but things were in flux and we arrived at that conclusion. So we modified the memo to reflect that new development. Thank you, and I apologize for that change. So I'm going to, let's go to the next slide. Let's step right into the operational update. Let's see here, we have.
Five minutes is what we had. Okay. Okay.
Good, the next slide, please. Okay, here we go. Thank you. No, I'm sorry, go back one, I apologize. Okay, so just as I touched on, we have several projects I'm going to talk about now. We have many more, but with time, does not allow to bring them all here in front of you today. So we're going to just bring some highlights in. In the ERP and admin area, we have done tremendous job on the digital personnel actions, DPA for short. DPAs are the updates to employee data in the ERP system. You know, historically, personnel actions, you know, happens anytime you make any modifications to an employee or new hire or rehire or employee that leaves and comes back and so on. To date, over 8,500 DPAs have been actually submitted since its launch in 2018. Now, why is this exciting? The trail paperwork that usually follows each and every one of those and the manual entries, it's a thing of the past, all gone. It's all on the ERP forms that flow from the initiator to the approval to the next level, all the way back to HR. And the retros are completely eliminated for every one of those that we do in tronity now. It's a huge effort with the huge savings that has changed the art lives at multiple levels, at the ad operating departments and back here in HR. The next topic is the enterprise project management. Right now, we're in the, we're going to be finalizing the requirements on that soon. It will start Phase One in this year. And Phase One will address the needs of the CES departments and of course DPR. And that's also going to be a huge, a huge benefit to both, to all departments involved here. The next area is the time and attendance management. This is our goal is timekeeping system. We have, we are in the process of releasing the seasonal payroll automation in phases. This actually also, it's a game changer and, you know, there's no doubt about it. It's going to be, time cards are done manually for all our seasonal employees. We're going to digitize those from start to finish, completely eliminating the bigger trail that starts with the employee to the supervisor, to the back office folks in HR and payroll. All going to be digital, all going to be online on the system, 100%. We look forward to rolling this out by the end of this year. The next area is security assessment and the training testing. We have done, we have done a three-year agreement on this. We've done the first one last year, went through process of finishing the second one this year. Why do we do it every year? You know, the world changes and it was changing more than ever. But we have decided to do that every year for three years. And that allows us time every year to identify what's wrong with areas that need to be improved, improve on those. And we're pretty confident by the time we get another report, we'll find other areas that we need to tweak. It's an ongoing effort to continually improve our security. I'm going to go on the next slide. Next, I'm going to give you a comparison of the CIO budget. The CIO is responsible for three areas, corporate IT, the OCIO, and the commission-wide IT projects. I'm making a correction on the bottom right of the screen, but I'll get to that in a second. So corporate IT, FY22, has gone down by 4.1% from FY21. And the main reason for that is the movement of some software licenses and subscriptions that we had in corporate IT. And we'll move in that to the SEWIT under licenses. You'll see that later on in the slides. OCIO budget has a slight decrease of 0.09%. Commission-wide IT also had a slight increase that's due to the licensing, licenses shifting from corporate IT to the commission-wide. New initiatives for corporate IT, we have actually a reduction of 2.6%. OCIO a reduction of 16%. And there are no new initiatives for the OCIO, by the way. It's only one new initiative, one new project for SEWIT, which is the ERP project that Mr. Zimmerman spoke of a little bit ago. And that is in for next year. That's the only project that we're asking. And the actual reduction in SEWIT is 24.81%. Sorry about that error. I apologize for the error, but it's down 24.81%. Moving on to the next slide, corporate IT budget request. Basically, we have a base budget that has been reduced and that's mostly due to the fact that we moved licenses out from corporate to SEWIT. So the proposed changes are $8,400. That comes directly from the SEWIT chair for corporate IT and the SEWIT projects. But overall, FY22 budget request is down by 3.8%. Going on to the next slide, the CIO I S F budget request. Basically, in FY22, base budget increase, we have down, we have actually a decrease of $15,000, 0.9%. Being proposed changes for the CIO are $600. Again, that's also the SEWIT initiatives, that's 0.04% all in all. But all in all, we are down, the requests were down to $1.5 million, that's a decrease of 0.83%. On the next slide, you will see a major breakdown of the numbers of the software license prescriptions. Now, I'm not going to spend too long. the right, it's 1.329, and Montgomery is $2.32 million, and, I'm sorry, $190,000, and the total is 2.320030. That's total licenses. Now, there are additional licenses on the next slide. Those are either new or CI could move, so they came from CIP or they're newly proposed. And I'll point a couple out real quick. You see the import, that's a big-ticket item, $458,000. That's the software as a service, little SaaS, cloud subscription for import. We have moved that from corporate IT to CEWIT funding. The NeoGeld also moved from HR to corporate IT, but let me focus on some very two, some very important projects. There are two of them. One is the data loss prevention, right there in the center of the page. Data loss prevention is software, is another layer of security that would help us mitigate and deal with the risk associated from us going from somewhat, you know, online to almost 100% online now, doing business day in and day out. This is going to help us, you know, mitigate and deal with the ever-increasing security risk. The other one is what mentioning is the Office 365 backup. Microsoft, with all their, you know, cloud existence, all the features and tools, they do not provide backup. Backup is the responsibility of the customer, users like us. So now that we have moved a lot of our files into OneDrive and SharePoint, and everything is done by email for the most part, we feel that the need to address the backup is more important than ever. All the parties agreed to fund this project. This also has a slight benefit, but it's with huge value, which is the ability to do e-discovery reliably and with ease.
Okay, Mr. Chalé, your time is running short, so you need to move it along.
Yes, ma'am. Next slide. I'm going to go to the next slide.
Okay.
Okay, so let me just, we'll go with say the total for these new licenses, $970,000 for all of that. The next slide goes just simply, we look at the Prince George's cost of the only new ISF project, which is the ERP, $1,000, split between the two counties, $589,000 for Prince George's, $410,000 for Montgomery. And on the next slide, it's a quick comparison of the budget summary here. Licenses subscriptions difference between FY '21 and FY '22. We have a 42% increase with our software license subscriptions, and that's due again to the shifting of some of the licenses from CIP to CEWIT, and the addition of two subscriptions, the Office 365 backup and the data loss prevention. And the CEWIT projects, only one project we exposed, which is the ERP project, that makes, that is down by 24.8%. Our total CEWIT project, total cost is up by 24.5%, again, due to the software license increase.
Okay.
Done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, because we have to start at 11:00. So let me just see if there's any quick questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to take the next minute. I just want to thank everyone for, that was it. Mr. Quo, you had nothing else to add, right?
Well, the only thing to add is that we'll be back before you on November 5th.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to everybody. I mean, I've worked with you all day in and day out, and we have all of these calls, and you all have, each one of you, each department, our Department of Parks and Recreation, our Department of, our Planning Department, our, every single office within Central Administrative Services, I see everybody, all of our officers, everybody has done such a fantastic job during this COVID pandemic. I mean, you all have risen to the occasion in a humongous way, and we've had, we had some bumps along the road early on trying to navigate and get oriented, but you quickly, you know, adjusted and rebounded and have been innovative, proactive in every conceivable way, from all the programming the Department of Parks and Recreation did, virtual and otherwise, with working with, you know, the municipalities and everybody's issues, trying to get things moving but still keeping things safe. Our police have been phenomenal, even with the protests and since then and other things still coming up. Everybody's just been fantastic. Our legal department has navigated so many different new issues and gotten us through some really big cases in extraordinarily, in extraordinary way. Planning Department has continued with permits. The Board has been fantastic too, and the Planning Department in keeping our Board hearings going so that we can keep moving Prince George's County forward. Every single person has completed to, completed to the whole, and you've just done a phenomenal job. So, and we've worked through countless, countless challenges, and we still have more ahead. So thank you very much, everyone, and we'll look forward to the briefing on November 5th. So I don't have time to go get my coffee now. Oops. Okay, so we're... Okay. So, good morning, everyone. I'm Chair of the Prince, I'm Elizabeth Hewlett, Chair of the Prince George's County Planning Board. The Planning Board is in session for its October 15, 2020, meeting. We just finished our administrative items and our budget presentation, so now we will pursue our development review items. In an abundance of caution resulting from the global spread of the COVID-19 virus, this is the Planning Board's, drum roll, please, 24th virtual meeting since March. Twenty-four. We have not missed a beat. And thank you to our Planning Board, thank you to our Planning Department, thank you to our team, and the Chairman's Office has done such a spectacular job. Thank you so much, everyone. During these continued challenging times, we remain committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, our applicants, stakeholders, and of course, our staff as we continue to business operations to propel Prince George's County forward. I'm going to take a moment to remind everyone of the participation guidelines for our hearings. Speaker pre-registration and pre-submission of exhibits is required. We say this every time. All participants must pre-register, and all materials or exhibits must be submitted by 12:00 noon on the Tuesday before the Planning Board, as shown on the screen, as announced in our weekly meetings, as posted on our website, and as printed on our agenda. Registered speakers and presenters connecting through a computer, tablet, or smartphone can join the meeting with the link provided via email from the Planning Board office. Online registered participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. Registered speakers may also listen or participate using a phone line. The call-in number is provided via the email. We ask all participants to mute your phones when not speaking, and please do not put your phone on hold. To eliminate audio feedback, only one connected device with sound should be in a room at the same time. Of course, as always, the public may continue to watch Planning Board meetings streamed live, or if you wish to become a person of record, you may sign up on our online web form, and please note the screen for all of these instructions. We thank you for your flexibility, cooperation, and support. As always, we commence our meetings with a moment of silence for those who have passed since our last meeting of October 8. In our commission family, Andrew Moser, who is the Corporate Director of Learning and Organizational Development, who worked in the commission's Department of Human Resource Management. The growing number of victims of the widespread coronavirus, more than 7.9 million cases and 216,000 deaths in the United States alone, including an employee at the Largo branch of the Motor Vehicle Administration, right here in Prince George's County, where a total of five employees tested positive. As the cold weather approaches, this situation, we have been advised repeatedly by the medical profession, CDC, that this situation is going to get worse, so please take good care, everyone. Throughout the nation and the world, we want to remember the victims of Hurricane Delta. It's the second hurricane to strike Louisiana shoreline within the past six weeks. Four deaths have been reported as of this time. We want to remember Joe Morgan, age 77, Major League Baseball Hall of Fame, second baseman and sportscaster. He helped power the Big Red Machine, the Cincinnati Reds, in the 1970s, and in 1975 and '76, won back-to-back National League MVP awards and World Series titles. We want to remember former Senate Majority Leader Joe Bruno, who passed away. We also want to remember Roberta McCain, who was the mother of the late Senator John McCain, and she just passed away at the age, the tender age of 108. Mary Sheska, age 93, screenwriter and Broadway playwright who co-wrote the blockbuster Tootsie. Clark Middleton, known for his roles in Kill Bill, The Blacklist, and Twin Peaks. He was an actor, director, and producer. Tom Kennedy, age 93, longtime game show host, who hosted more than 15 TV shows, including You Don't Say and Name That Tune. Whitey Ford, age 91, former Major League Baseball pitcher in the 1950s and '60s, led the New York Yankees to six world titles and 11 American League championships. Conchada Farrell, age 77, best known for her roles, an actress best known for her roles on Two and a Half Men and L.A. Law, and in the movie Mystic Pizza. Margaret Nolan, best known for her memorable role in the James Bond film, Goldfinger. Bernard Cohen, age 86, who as a young neophyte, not long out of law school attorney, argued and won a victory supporting interracial marriage in the case of Loving versus Virginia. It was ultimately made into a movie, but he worked with ACLU, he volunteered with ACLU, and won that case. So we want to remember him. And then he became, then he served 16 years in the Virginia House of Delegates. Monica Roberts, transgender rights advocate and founding editor of TransGrio, a blog focusing on trans women of color and issues concerning them. Colonel John Russell, age 100, U.S. Army veteran, was the oldest living Olympic medalist at the time of his death. He won the Equestrian Bronze Medal in the 1952 Olympics, riding his horse, I think it's Democracy, or Democrat, that's the name of his horse, received the Purple Heart, the Bronze Star, and the Soldier's Medal. And there may be many, many more, but of course, we extend our deepest sympathy to any of you who may have suffered a loss of a loved one, and our hearts go out to you. We have our deepest sympathy. May we have that moment of silence, please. Thank you. So again, we're in the month of October. Today, October 15, is the last day of Hispanic Heritage Month. We continue to celebrate in this official month from September 15 through October 15, but we celebrate and embrace diversity 365 days a year and 366 in leap year. It is Italian-American Heritage Month and Polish-American Heritage Month. Again, we celebrate diversity. Breast Cancer Awareness Month, ladies, please get your mammogram. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Bullying Prevention Month. We will shatter the silence regarding domestic violence, and we will not tolerate bullying from anyone, no matter who they are or what position they hold. Down Syndrome Awareness Month, AIDS Awareness Month, National Crime Prevention Month, and Emotional Wellness Month, and let's all please work on this one. October 15, today is October the 15th, again, 1917, the infamous exotic dancer Mata Hari faced the firing squad for, as a German spy during World War I. 1924, President Calvin Coolidge declared the Statue of Liberty a national monument. A mighty, beautiful woman with a torch. It might really behoove us to remember her welcoming words inscribed on her, on the statue. "Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free." How welcoming to the United States. 1951 was the debut of the iconic I Love Lucy Show on CBS. 1959 was the premiere of one of my favorite TV shows, The Untouchables. 1966, President Lyndon Baines Johnson created the United States Department of Transportation. 1970, important to me, probably important to Commissioner Geraldo, the New York Knicks retired the number 10 worn by the awesome point guard Walt Clyde Frazier, one half, in my view, one half of the best backcourt team of all time, Walt Clyde and Earl the Pearl Monroe, and he was my big-time crush all throughout my teenage years and beyond. 1993, South African attorney, anti-apartheid activist, and then president, at the time president of the African National Congress, Nelson Mandela was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize, excuse me, Nobel Peace Prize, along with then-South African President de Klerk. The next year, though, in 1994, he, Nelson Mandela, was elected as South Africa's first black president. So, a 19, I mean, excuse me, in 2017, actress Alyssa Milano did a very simple tweet. It simply said, "If you've ever been sexually harassed or assaulted, write Me Too." With this simple but brave tweet, she ignited the Me Too movement. Other announcements. So with the Planning Department, the virtual kickoff meeting for the West Hyattsville Queens Chapel Sector Plan will be this Saturday, October 17, at 10:30 a.m. Residents, property owners, and stakeholders will learn about the upcoming sector plan for the areas surrounding West Hyattsville, including portions of Hyattsville, Mount Rainier, and Brentwood, and opportunities to participate in the planning process. You must register by noon on Friday, October 16. That's tomorrow. So everything is depicted on the slide. Also, please join the Planning Department, the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Prince George's Arts and Humanities Council for a virtual community meeting on the Cultural Arts Study, Saturday, October 24, at 10 a.m. You can learn about the first comprehensive inventory and assessment of the county's diverse and cultural ecology, and ways to participate in the planning process, and please see the online registration link. The Department of Parks and Recreation will host three virtual community meetings to explore new regionally-serving multi-generational centers. We've been trying to get away from centers that only serve one segment of the population in terms of age. So we're trying to go through multigens, and that, those meetings will be at the Adult by Hyattsville in vicinity, Rivendell Glen Ridge in vicinity, and Glendale Bowie in vicinity, and the dates are depicted on the screen. Each meeting will take place from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and you can visit pgparks.com and type in multi-generational centers in the search field. The Department of Parks and Recreation Master Plan Development, let's help them envision the future of Casca Regional Park and Walker Mill Regional Park. Your input will be used to foster plans that will guide the development and conservation of park resources through the next 20 to 25 years. So see the slide for links to the project websites. Census. Okay, so we've been making census announcements for over a year now. Hot off the presses, the administration got, this presidential administration got the Supreme Court to halt the census, and that census will come to an end tonight. So we have, Prince George's County is now at a response rate of 69.7%. We were really, really, really hoping to get to at least 70%. So we have 0.3% to go. I'm saying we have less than 24 hours to get these numbers up. I still advise everyone to tell everyone you know to register for the census, complete your form, my2020census.gov, or call 844-330-2020. Finally, I would say, how about those Lakers? They are the 2020 NBA champions, and... And the Finals MVP player is LeBron James. So congratulations to LeBron James and the Los Angeles Lakers. We would note that Rafael Nadal won the French Open for his 20th Grand Slam title. And then in closing out my announcements, let's all wish a happy birthday to our own acting deputy director of the Planning Department, Derek Bellage. Happy birthday, Derek. Again, these are very tough times. So in advance, we want to thank each and every one of you and indicate how much we appreciate your flexibility, your cooperation, and your support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. It is imperative that we look out for one another. We ask that you make every effort to stay safe. Really reach out to one another. Stay strong, stay resilient, stay woke, and never, ever lose hope. Remain ever hopeful as we all strive to get through these very difficult, challenging times now and ahead, but together. Thank you. So with that, this is going to be our order of cases. We're going to start with the consent agenda. Is there anyone here to oppose the staff's recommendations? Oh, you know what I needed to say. We have our planning board members here. I have recognized Vice Chair Bailey, Commissioner Geraldo, Commissioner Washington, all present. We also have with us our Planning Director Andre Chekley in the room, our technical hearing writer Marie Proctor in the room, our Planning Board Administrator Jessica Jones here, and our senior planning technician Kenny Flanagan, who's working all the PowerPoints today for the presentations, Ryan Cron, who is back there just making everything work out for us in terms of technology. So we want to thank him as well. We have James Hunt on the line, who is the chief of development review, who's working very, very hard with us. And then we also have our legal counsel. We have David Warner, principal counsel, who's on today. And he's our lead attorney for today. So with that, I'm just going to start with the consent agenda. Items 4B and 4D. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move adoption of the final approval of items on the consent agenda in accordance with the recommendation of the staff.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Bailey, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo to move approval of the consent agenda. Madam Vice Chair.
Vote aye.
Okay, Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Washington, I mean Commissioner Geraldo.
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, 4 is 0. Next, we have item 7, which will be followed by the resolution and item 8. So let me make sure we have everyone for this. And thank, it's actually, we have Brian Bird. And before that, Mr. Hunt.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Any comment?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board. For the record, I'm James Hunt, the Division Chief for the Development Review Division. Today, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce to you Mr. Brian Bird. He's a planning coordinator within the Neighborhood Planning Section of the Community Planning Division. Mr. Bird obtained his master's degree in regional planning from Cornell University and a bachelor's in environmental studies from the University of Washington. Previously, Mr. Bird worked as a long-range planner for the city of Las Cruces, New Mexico, where he helped develop Southern Mexico's first active transportation plan. A fun fact about Mr. Bird is that he spent the first four months of the pandemic in Paraguay, safeguarded by an incredible host family. Everyone, please join me in welcoming Mr. Bird.
Okay, there we go. Welcome, Mr. Bird.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Brian Bird, the Long Range Planning Section. I'm here today to talk about item 7 on this morning's agenda. It's staff's analysis of testimony from the September 15th Joint Public Hearing on a proposed minor amendment to the Southern Green Line Station Area Development District Overlay Zone, or DDOZ. Staff's analysis of this testimony and recommendation that the planning board endorse the proposed minor amendment is contained within our materials for this morning's meeting. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation with a minor amendment and staff's analysis. Do you want to proceed with the PowerPoint? So yes, I'm here today to present the Southern Green Line Station Area Development District Overlay Zone Minor Amendment. Next slide, please. The overview is that we're looking at CR 832020 Minor Amendment. The minor amendment to the Southern Green Line Station Area Development District Overlay, or DDOZ, is to permit nail salon and beauty supply and accessory store uses within certain underlying zones. Next slide. The project corridor surrounds four stations on the southern end of the metro line in Prince George's County, Maryland, extending from Southern Avenue down to Branch Avenue along Maryland 5 to the Capitol Beltway Interstate 195. The four stations within the planned area include Southern Ave., Nayla Road, Suitland, and Branch Avenue Metro stations. Next slide. So here's the project timeline for the minor amendment. On July 21st, council initiated CR 812020, a minor amendment process to the overlay, sorry, CR 832020, a minor amendment process to the overlay zone to permit these two uses in the zones in which they were previously specifically prohibited. On August 6th, a letter was sent out to approximately 5,000 property owners within the overlay zone. The letter outlined a virtual meeting, public hearing for September 15th. And the letter gave persons an opportunity to give public comment via the eComment portal. On September 15th, there was a virtual public meeting hearing held. September 30th, there was the close of public record. And then today, October 15th, we're presenting to you for the planning board. And then the district council approval will be to be decided. Next slide. So for the public testimony, the Joint Public Hearing pursuant to Section 27-642 of the zoning ordinance, we had a total of verbal testimony of two. We had a written testimony of five, and the total testimony received was seven. Testimony supporting CR 832020 was five. Testimony opposing CR 832020 was two. Next slide. So the public testimony in support of CR 832020 really talked a lot about supporting local businesses, lifting restrictions to provide business opportunities in the Marlow Heights Shopping Center, as well as a current demand for these uses in the area. Next slide. Testimony that opposed CR 832020 supports uses, but would like them to be narrowly allowed around metro stations, so not a blanket allowance, as well as preferring higher-quality developments and mention of residents deserving better. Next slide. So for the staff analysis, the evaluation staff reviewed and evaluated the minor amendment to the 2014 approved Southern Green Line Station Area DDO Zone for conformance to the following criteria. Criteria 1, the requirements of Section 27-642 of the zoning ordinance for a minor amendment to an approved master sector functional plan and development district overlay zone, including conformance to Plan 2035 and the 2014 approved Southern Green Line Station Area Sector Plan. And then criteria 2, the requirements of Section 27-548.26 of the zoning ordinance for an amendment of an approved development district overlay zone. Next slide. So the staff analysis for evaluation of criteria number 1, the minor amendment advances the goals of Plan 2035 to build a strong economy built on concentrated public investment and targeted transit-oriented commercial mixed-use centers, and 2, to attract new businesses. And as well, the minor amendment advances the goals of the 2014 approved Southern Green Line Station Area Sector Plan to design mixed-use walkable communities near each station that allow residents to access basic daily needs without requiring the use of a private automobile, as well as permitting convenience retail businesses that are consistent with thriving communities. Next slide. And then for evaluation criteria number 2, the proposed minor amendments meet the requirements of Section 27-548.26 by recommending changes to the list of allowed uses within a development district overlay zone. Next slide. So the next steps are, we are here today on October 15th, 2020. Planning Board makes recommendation on minor amendment and transmits to council. October 20th, 2020, district council work session. And then on November 10th, 2020, anticipated county council action. Next slide. So please let me know if you have any questions. There is a project website, and my name is Brian Bird. And there's all my contact information. And due to the tight timeframes contained in Section 27-642 of the zoning ordinance, today is the last day for the planning board to act on this minor amendment. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Bird, and very good job on your first presentation to this board. So welcome and kudos. You can breathe now. Let's see if the board has any questions for you at this time. Madam Vice Chair.
No questions. Good job, Mr. Bird. Welcome.
Okay, Commissioner Geraldo.
No questions. Welcome aboard, Mr. Bird. Good presentation.
Commissioner Washington.
Sir.
No questions. And I too, I would like to welcome you, Mr. Bird. Thank you so much.
Okay, so with that, so, and then we have, so we needed to direct the resolution. And so do we need an action on this first, and then the actual resolution?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation that staff had approved the minor amendment and transmit to district council.
Second.
Okay, so that would be item 8. So we, so in item 8, so we have a motion from Commissioner Washington, seconded by, I guess it was Madam Vice Chair who seconded it? Or no?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Madam Vice Chair.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we can go to, with that, I think we can go to item 9 and 10. So that was 7? That was just 7, okay? Okay, so Madam Vice, you know what? We need a motion on the actual resolution then, which is item 8.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Washington got to it first. Okay. Who was the second?
Again, pick one. Dorothy.
Okay, Madam Vice Chair seconded. Madam Vice Chair.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it. Are we straight, are we straight, Mr. Warner? Now that we've gotten both votes, may I say, Mr. Hunt, it's good to see you. Okay, all right. So now we will go to item 10. I mean, excuse me, 9 and 10. So, okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, James Hunt, before you today, to introduce to you Mrs. Madhula Gupta. She's our new planner coordinator within the subdivision section of the Development Review Division. Mrs. Gupta attained a bachelor's degree in architecture from the School of Planning and Architecture in New Delhi, India, as well as master's degree in landscape architecture, also from the School of Planning and Architecture in New Delhi. Mrs. Gupta will obtain a LEED AP, B, D, and C accreditation, and is a licensed professional landscape architect in both Maryland and Virginia. Mrs. Gupta comes to the planning department from KCI Technologies, where she worked as a project manager from 2015 until her recent start with the commission. A fun fact about Mrs. Gupta is that she loves trying new recipes. Everyone, please join me in welcoming Mrs. Gupta. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I'm Buridala Gupta with the subdivision and zoning section. Item number 9 on the agenda is a request for a waiver of the planning board rules of procedure. Item number 10 is a reconsideration request for preliminary plan subdivision.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gupta.
I saw that. I'll repeat. Item number 9 on the agenda is a request for a waiver of the planning board of rules of procedure. And item number 10 is a reconsideration request for preliminary plan of subdivision 4-14008, also known as Skyline Subdivision. The planning board approved the preliminary plan on October 8, 2015, and the resolution was adopted on October 29, 2015. By letter dated September 21, 2020, Mr. Rivera, representing the applicant, requested the waiver of the rules of procedure first, and if granted, a reconsideration of condition 9 of the resolution on the basis of good cause. Condition 9 pertains to denial of access to Suitland Road, as further described in staff's memorandum dated October 1, 2020, and the applicant's request. If the request for a waiver of the rules of procedure and the reconsideration request for the preliminary plan are granted, staff will provide further analysis on the merits of the request at a later planning board meeting, planning board hearing, I'm sorry. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Gupta. Very nice job, too, for you, and welcome aboard. So we're really pleased to have you. Let's see, after Mr. Rivera speaks, let's see if there's any questions. Mr. Rivera, on the waiver.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, I'm Rivera. It's good to see everybody. It's good to see you in person, sort of, Ms. Gupta. We've exchanged a lot of emails, and I appreciate all the help in the past and the future. With me today, so I just turn the camera here, is Mr. Danner, my client.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, members of the board.
On the waiver specifically, we would like to address, obviously, the merits of reconsideration once you grant the waiver, if you do. The subdivision was approved some time ago. And since that time period, there's been changes in circumstances, ownership, et cetera, that were mentioned in the discussion portion of the staff report. So we believe, we pause to at least to read the rules and discuss the merits of our request. And obviously, if reconsideration was granted, we would come back to the future for a merits hearing. But it's very limited to the access issue. And we think that'd be a good argument for that point, too. Thank you.
Okay, so in order to hear the request itself, we do have to have a motion to waive or suspend the rules of procedure. Is there such a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Madam Vice Chair. Madam Vice Chair.
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington.
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo.
Vote aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, 4 is 0. Okay, so, Ms. Gupta, do you want to add anymore? Or do you want Mr. Rivera to continue at this point? Do you have more substantive matters to address?
No, ma'am, I would just like to incorporate the presentation from item 9 for item 10. And besides that, the staff has nothing additional to present.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gupta. And your presentation is incorporated into item 10. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rivera.
Yes, again, for the record, I'm Rivera with Mr. Danner. The PowerPoint, I believe, is at least at the bottom of my screen, so it might be helpful if the board was oriented to where the property is before I begin.
So what page do you want to go to? Slide 3?
I guess, yes, there's like an aerial.
Oh, that would be maybe slide 6? Yeah.
Sure, that one up here is good. So the subject property is outlined in red, just to give the board orientation. To the right is Suitland Road. If you go north on Suitland Road, it's where Silver Hill Road and Suitland Road is, Suitland Parkway, where the census bureau site is, which is quite timely these days, and subject to the Suitland Town Center redevelopment effort by the county. So that's wonderful. This is a vacant site that has been vacant for quite some time that Mr. Danner's predecessors acquired, that he acquired. For purpose of orientation, the building to the bottom, below the red line, is the local VFW, Veterans of Foreign Wars, which is good, because my dad was a veteran, Mr. Danner's a veteran, and we do a lot of veteran work. And they have written a letter of support for this request. To the rear of our site is an existing subdivision that we've been working with during the time of the preliminary plan and before. And they have been supportive of the project. And the Offit family submitted a letter of support as well. Across the street, you'll see, and this is very relevant to the quest, where a lot of single-family detached houses with direct access to Silver Road, single-family detached houses with direct access to Silver Road, which is the exact issue that we're considering today. And then to the north, there is a small shopping center with access to Sutland Road, as well as a church. The prior preliminary plan required, let me go back to the regulatory issue. Under section 24121, the code requires that property that fronts an arterial road should not have direct access to lots, individual access. But as you can see from the aerial plainly up and down both sides of the road, that was quite a prevalent issue. And we're not trying to exacerbate that. What we're trying to do is mitigate the impact, because this is newer development. The original preliminary plan had seven lots, and the staff and the board had approved basically a service road along Sutland Road with one access point, so that all seven houses would go out, feed into the road left and right. The request that we have made is to delete the service road and combine and reduce from seven lots, one lot, to six lots, rather. So we lost one lot and have three shared accesses. So each of the two houses would have their own shared access out to Sutland Road. But that is a lot better than the situation you could see up and down Sutland Road today. We did not willy-nilly do that. We worked with DEPI and Puppet Works. In the record, there's an approved stormwater concept plan that indicates that they have approved that concept, but is obviously subject to the reconsideration of the preliminary plan, detailed site plan that followed with architecture, plat, and permits. So that, that exhibit is in the record that indicates that, from their standpoint, as the regulatory agency with jurisdiction over that road, that they are satisfied. When I turn to, it's not front of you, but 24103, the policy of subdivision regulations, Mr. Warner, it's 24103 of the sub-act, paragraph A and B in particular, states that "It is hereby declared to be the policy of Prince George's County to consider the subdivision land of land, and subsequent development of the subdivided land is subject to control the county comma pursuant to the general plan comma," and this is the salient point, "for the orderly planned efficient economic, economical development of the county." And we talked about landfill, right, to not cause any danger to public health, safety, and welfare. So the proposal we have, we go from seven lots with one service road with one access to six lots with three shared access points. So as to paragraph B about health, safety, and welfare, the regulatory agency has determined that they, in their jurisdiction, did not see a health, safety, and welfare issue. They are fully aware of the situation up and down Sutland Road, and we pointed it out to them quite extensively. As to the orderly planned efficient economic development, it does make sense to have for six or seven lots, less paving, less impact, less impervious area, and there's no impact to APF for transportation as to trips, because it's one last lot, seven lots were approved before, so one last lot is obviously got to be just as okay. And the health, safety, and welfare is addressed by DEPI's prepared approvals. Then when you turn to 124121a10, one of the guidelines for subdivision design is generally subdivision shall be designed, designed to avoid unnecessary and costly roads, utility extensions creating an energy consumption. So these days, with global warming, et cetera, focused on less is more, shared driveways are less, and satisfy the same intent to provide safe, efficient access economically and in accordance with subdivision regulations, policies. So we would submit that that meets that goal of 124121a10. And then further, if, when we get to the DSP, as you know, the prime criteria for approving a site plan follows that same theme, that a plan can be approved if it's a reasonable alternative for satisfying site design guideline without requiring unreasonable costs and without contracting substantially from the utility of the development for its use. So there's obviously a theme that we're trying to follow, and the nature from a technical standpoint that we met those regulations. Now, as you know, Madam Chair and the board, we always try to work with the community. And in the record, Ms. Gupta, and the record shows, we have a letter from a neighbor behind us, the Offit, and in the preliminary plan file, there's letters from, indications from those folks, too, that they supported it. Let me turn to that first letter, which is submitted on October 6 to the record. It's to the chair, signed by Pastor Offit at Reemy Drive.
I think we, we have this, right?
I don't know if you have it.
Okay, hold on a second.
Available.
Yes, we do have it.
The whole page?
Yeah, we have it.
Yes.
Okay. I don't want to read it all verbatim, but.
No, you don't need to read it at all. You don't need to read it at all, because we have it. If you want to.
I read you five by five.
Okay.
So, they pointed out several issues. They don't want it to look like a townhouse development, they don't want pavement, they don't want people parking there, et cetera. So they are satisfied that the new proposal would be supported. The next letter was from VFW Post 9619 dated October 7, and they likewise agreed that the concept was acceptable to them, and they've been our neighbors all along. So they are also in support and directly adjacent. Lastly, we received a letter from the town of Morningside last night, or yesterday, after day, which was filed. So that it would be a new addition, if I could ask the board to accept that, dated October 14, signed by the mayor, Bernard J. Can of Morningside.
Okay. So, that one I don't have, that's, you're just, what? We didn't receive that?
Yeah, I sent it in yesterday. I know the deadline is Tuesday, but they don't meet till Tuesday night, so we sent it in yesterday.
We can't, we can't help you with that one. That's too late. However, depending on, depending on how the vote goes, you have opportunity at, if it's set in at a, when we set in the actual reconsideration hearing.
Okay.
This is the request. We cannot, we cannot accept it, there's no slipping it in. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That really covers the issue. We'd like the opportunity at a merits hearing to discuss further with staff, DEPI, and others, the concept of going from seven lots to six lots, and six lots with three shared access points, rather than seven with one service road that goes out to Sutland Road. And we would obviously have more support from any other technical agencies required. I know that Mr. Maisag, your transportation would depend on APF, et cetera. And then, assuming we pass that, we would see architecture, et cetera, at DSP. Mr. Danner is here, if you have any questions, it's him. He has quite been busy in this community with the VFW and other veterans issues, as you well know, Madam Chair. And I'll leave it at that.
Yes, as well I do. He's not signed up to speak, though, so, so anyway, good to see him. So let me do this. Mr. Maisag, are you here just for any, oh, yes, he is signed up to speak, I'm so sorry. Yeah, yes, he is signed up to speak.
I am here, Madam Chair.
Okay. Mr. Maisag, do you have anything to add at this juncture?
I really don't.
Okay, that's Mr. Maisag. Yeah, Mr. Maisag, you're saying you do or you do not have anything else to add?
I really don't have any more to add, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Danner, do you have something to add at this point? You know, y'all look awfully close, yeah, y'all might want to spread out, but okay. Okay. Mr. Danner, okay.
The developer and owner of this property, and just want to say thank you very much for allowing me to bring this request up to you guys, and it's always a pleasure working with you and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Chinmay Bias?
He's our civil engineer who communicated with DEPI. He's here, as Mr. Maisag is, for technical support or any questions the board and staff may have.
Okay, thank you. So, and you stated for your grounds, other good cause, essentially?
Yes.
Okay. That's, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Washington. Based on the applicant's testimony, in addition to the letters of support for the, from the community, I move that we approve the reconsideration request for preliminary plan 4-14008 for the purpose of addressing the transportation findings and conditions on the basis of good cause, other good cause, and it shall only be, or it should be limited to reconsideration for condition number nine.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. And for the record, only someone who made, who voted with the majority could make the motion, and Commissioner Wash, in the original preliminary plan, and Ms. Washington, Commissioner Washington does fit that criteria. So we have a motion in a second. Madam Vice Chair?
Vote aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Vote aye.
Okay. Thank you, the ayes have it, four zero. Mr. Rivera, at the, you have time before the, when this is set in?
Two days before.
Okay. In accordance with that headline, so, okay. Thank you. Okay. So thank you.
Thanks to everybody, have a great day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So without further ado, then we'll go to item six, which is detailed site plan 19054, the hub at College Park. We have a number of people signed up on this matter, so let, let me check everybody's attendance. Let's start with Mr. Holbut.
Present, Madam Chair.
Ms. Kozak? If needed, I think.
Present, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Tedesco?
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm present.
Wonderful. Mr. Jubah?
Present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Tom Maisag?
Present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Noel Smith?
Present.
Okay. Mark Goheißen? There he is, there he is. Okay. Okay, Mr. Goheißen? I didn't hear you. Okay. Okay. Present. Joshua Patterson?
Present.
Mike Lindhart?
Present.
Josh Mings? David Vickel? Chip Shell?
Present.
Mr. McGinnis?
Good morning.
And good morning to you, too. Terry Shum?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Miriam Bader? There she is. We're unmuting you. We see you're signed in. Does she have to do something? Ms. Bader, you have to unmute on your end. Okay. We'll come back to you. We see you, we see you're logged in, so we, we'll come back to you. Okay, Tracy Skinner?
Good morning, I'm here.
Good morning. Jeff Zalisco?
Good morning, present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. We got a full house. We have several exhibits, and to the record, and I guess, Mr. Holbut, you can talk through those exhibits. And we have revised.
Madam Chair, I'm here, Miriam Bader's here.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we have a number of exhibits, and we have applicant's exhibit number one, revised conditions, applicant exhibit number two, the overview of course spaces, applicant exhibit number three, a design comparison, and then number, and exhibit number four is a University of Maryland letter, letter of support signed by Mr. McGinnis. Okay, Mr. Holbut, you are on.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, I'm Jeremy Holbut with Urban Design Section. Project before you is detailed site plan DSP 19054, the hub at College Park. Thank you for taking care of the housekeeping items. Those were the additional items that have been added to the record. The applicant is requesting a mixed-use building with 161 multifamily dwelling units and 1,022 square feet of commercial space. Next slide, please. The site is located in the northern portions of Prince George's County in finding Area 66 and Council District 3. Next slide. More specifically, the subject, the subject site is on the north side of Knox Road, approximately 200 feet east of the intersection of Guilford Drive. Next slide. The subject property is zone mixed-use N-FIL, or NUI zone. Next slide. The property is located in the 2010 approved central US1 corridor sector plan, and is located within the development district overlay zone, shown in the hatched area in blue coloring. The property is also in aviation policy area APA 6, shown here in green. Next slide. Aerial photo illustrates the existing conditions of the property, which is less than an acre in size. The property is currently improved with two three-story residential duplexes on the site and service parking, and that the applicant proposes to raise as part of this project. The property is bound to the north by University of Maryland property and Lehigh, and beyond Lehigh Road on the university campus, to the east by an existing fraternity house, and to the left by multifamily to the west. And Mr. McGinnis can maybe correct me on the frat house component. The mixed-use building to the south is also known as Terrific Road. Next slide. The site map shows that the site slopes from Lehigh Road to the north, to Knox Road to the south, and the site rare change over 20 feet. Next slide. The property is just east of Master Plan Collector Guilford Drive, shown here in green. Next slide. The bird's eye view is looking south, at, with the Terrific Road development at the top of the slide, the subject property is highlighted in yellow and shows the two existing duplexes that will be raised, as well as the neighboring four-story buildings and the University of Maryland properties to the south, which include the south of Candace Commons and parking structure. Next slide. The site plan proposes a nine-story building that will have frontage on Knox Road with an additional pedestrian access across University property due to Lehigh Road on the north side. Access to below-grade parking will be provided at the bottom left, or the southwest corner of the building, with the main entrance and retail entrances to be located at the bottom right, or the southeast corner of the building. A bridge and a sidewalk on the University property will provide access to the second story of the building. It will be located in upper left of the site plan shown. The building will also have a rooftop hot tub and club space, and street trees, and onsite landscaping are also provided and shown in the graphic. The applicant has requested six amendments allowing for the increase in height, as all onsite plannings to be evergreen or ornamental, to allow for the parking structure to be placed within the setback and to reduce the parking requirement, and to change the green building program that the DDOZ requires. Next slide. The nine-story building's primary facade will be on the south elevation shown here at the top of the slide. The building's massing on this facade will be divided by a light well, well that will allow light to interior units. The southeast corner, or the right side of this facade, will have the primary, or partially elevated terrace that will take advantage of. that will take advantage of the changes in the grade along Knox Road. Retail entrances along with the rooftop terrace, hot tub will be located on this side of the building. The north elevation will face Lehigh, as shown here on the bottom of the slide, and the University of Maryland campus. The building will be surrounded on three sides by retaining walls, including a 16-foot wall which will be located adjacent to this frontage. A pedestrian entrance to this facade will be provided via a bridge that will enter the second story, and the building will connect to the middle of Lehigh Road and provide direct access to the campus. Next slide. The building will be constructed of red brick with varying brick patterns to provide interest. All of the upper stories, upper two stories, will be finished in dark metal panel. The seventh story below the rooftop terrace will also have an additional level of metal paneling on the southeast portion of the building. This slide shows the west elevation on the top and the east elevation on the bottom. A mural is proposed on the east elevation near the main entrances, and above ground transformers will be located in this area and incorporated into the mural and screened with decorative metal panels. Additionally, the two proposed building mounted signs will be located on the north, are shown here, and will be located on the north and south elevations. Next slide. The building sections show how the additional requested height will fit in with the existing structures, with the west elevation at the top of the slide showing South Campus Commons to the left and Terrapin Road to the right. The middle image is the southern elevation, or the Knox Road elevation, with a four-story frat house to the right and the four-story multifamily building to the left. Next slide. These renderings show- This slide shows multiple renderings with the upper left showing the southwest corner of the building as seen from Knox Road. The upper right showing the southeast corner with the mural on the east elevation and the rooftop terrace. The bottom left image shows the terrace along Knox Road in front of the building entrances with signage above. And the bottom right image shows the northwest corner viewed from Lehigh Road on campus with the signage on top of the building. Next slide. These additional renderings provide additional views of the building as seen from Knox Road, with the bottom right image showing the bridge on the northeast corner of the building as seen from the University of Maryland campus. Next slide. This slide shows the retaining wall details as well as the paving, art, and site furnishing details. Next slide. Please start the video. The video shows the building in relationship to the Terrapin Road development as you walk east on Knox Road, passing the mural and the entrances, main entrances to the building and the terrace. And then we'll fly over to show the relationship to the surrounding buildings before dropping back down to Lehigh Road and then University of Maryland campus to show the bridge connection. The urban design section, or urban design staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve site plan DSP 19054 for the hub at College Park. The applicant has proposed revised conditions to the staff report, which staff is in support of. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hulbut. I'm so glad we had the video, and I'm so glad we had the renderings on slides 14 and 15 and the details on slide 16, because it just, it looks better than, I guess, 11 and 12. But it looks really, really good. Okay, so let's see if there's any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
Well, yeah, I agree. It looks really, really good, but I lost the bridge, or the bridge lost to me. Oh, I see it now. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, and I agree. It's a very nice-looking property, so.
Yes. Okay, Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, but I am impressed by the renderings, and I appreciate the video to show the project, the entire project. Thank you.
As we went to the bridge, I was so tempted to quote James Brown, "Take him to the bridge there," but okay. All right.
I can shake it with him.
Okay, so if there are no other questions of Mr. Hulbut at this time, Mr. Tedesco?
Morning, Madam Chair. Members of the planning board. Again, Matthew Tedesco, the law firm of McMeohose, here on behalf of the applicant and affiliate of Core Spaces. I want to thank staff also for putting together this video rendering. It helps tell the story more so than even the three-dimensional of images that our architects put together. And so, you know, the combination of the architectural team as well as your team helped facilitate these, a very impressive video. So I just want to publicly thank your staff for putting that together. Before I get into my presentation, I just wanted to maybe put Mr. McGinnis on the spot on behalf of the university, if he had a couple of words, because I've got some technical stuff to run through very quickly, and I didn't want to usurp all of Mr. McGinnis's time, because I believe his comments will be fairly succinct and to the point. And if that's okay with the board, I can come back and finish up my presentation.
Yes, why not? Let's put Mr. McGinnis right on the spot. Go ahead, Mr. McGinnis.
Well, good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the planning board. Succinct, maybe, in the eye of the holder. The University of Maryland is clearly, is clearly in support of this project. I think it's just, this is not the first video rendering that I've seen in this area on Knox Road. And the transformation that we're seeing here on campus's southern boundary on Knox Road with this and other private student housing projects, with the Bezuto mixed-use project, which is bringing both retail and non-student housing in a very short order, is remarkable. I'm on campus today. We're under a, kind of a canopy of construction cranes right now. And this is not campus construction. This is in the private sector. So it is all a good thing. I think this is going to be a very straightforward approval, and I'm pleased that it's going to be a very straightforward approval. But that's because it touches all of the boxes that we're looking for under the sector plan. It's a walkable, vibrant hub of activity. Transit-oriented development, sustainable design, balanced transportation network, and last but certainly not least, as I'm reading from the sector plan, a world-class educational institution. This is, I think this is thumbs up across the board, and I think it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Okay, let me go back to Mr. Tedesco.
Yes, thank you, Mr. McGinnis, and Madam Chair, thank you for the indulgence. If I may be so, could Kenny put up applicant's exhibit two? If that's possible? In her backup.
Nope. It's six. You go back to six.
If not, if I can share my screen, I have mine.
We'll give you permission to share your screen then. I don't know what's happening. Okay. Okay.
So everybody see that?
Yes.
So-
I don't know. Can we make it, can we make it, can you all see the print? Yeah, there we go. Okay. Can you read, everyone read it? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I need to zoom in. Just let me know.
Zoom in a little more.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll speak for everybody else. Oh, well, not too much, because we want to see the pictures at the bottom. Okay, okay. Yeah, we're good.
I can, okay. So obviously, this case should be very familiar with the board. We were here last week on the preliminary plan and subdivision. And as promised, we are here today on the detailed site plan. I know you went through a roll call, Madam Chair, but with me again is Mark Gohausen, Chip Shell from Core Spaces. We have David Vickel from Solzhe, Mike Lenhart from Lenhart Consulting. And we have the full assemblage of the Intunavich Associates architectural team, Jeff Zalisco, Joshua Patterson, Josh Mings, and Tom Mc. So they're all here as needed to answer any questions that you all may have. As I mentioned last week-
You mentioned a couple of names who are not on my list.
Extremely excited to be presenting this applicant to you all, introducing them to Prince George's County, to the city of College Park, and obviously to the University of Maryland. They've been working very closely with those agencies, both the university as well as the city of College Park. With us is Ms. Shum, and Ms. Bader from the city. As I mentioned last week, Core Spaces is a vertically integrated developer, owner, and operator of real estate assets in educational markets throughout the United States. They have, and I wanted to present this slide. I didn't last week, just to show, since their first delivery in 2013, they have won an award every single year since then in the Student Housing Business Innovator Awards, as well as other engineering and finance types of awards which are listed on the screen before you. Their assets, if I can just scroll down, their portfolio run from coast to coast. As you can see, this is their first project in Maryland, in Prince George's County, in the city of College Park, which we're very excited about and very thankful for. But you can see just from their portfolio the types of universities and communities that they have projects in, spanning coast to coast. And so, again, we're very excited to have them at the University of Maryland in College Park and in Prince George's County. The development that's being proposed here is known as the hub, which is their premier offering. So we're excited to have that. I will stop sharing my screen now.
Okay. We can do it, we can do it on our end, okay? Mr. Planning, I will take care of that.
So we could just maybe pull up the PowerPoint, Kenny, from, I think it was, one of the architectural, the three-dimensional ones. Actually, could go back, I'm sorry, can you go back two slides to the bird's eye view? Sorry, right there. Perfect. Thank you. And as Mr. McGinnis indicated, you know, this project is the culmination of what will soon to be finally the lead transformation of the original Knox Boxes in the second generation, I like to call, of the Knox Boxes. On this particular property, the two existing buildings are original Knox Boxes from the 1950s. There was a third Knox Box on the University of Maryland property, which is to the left of the yellow box, that was previously raised by the university. However, the other two facilities are existing privately owned and will be raised. And as Mr. McGinnis indicated, with this project as well as a future project that's in the queue, you know, this complete corridor from Guilford and the intersection of Knox will be completely transformed with this development and subsequent development, which we are extremely excited about, and the university is excited about, and not to speak for Ms. Shum or Ms. Bader, but I believe the city is also excited about. As Mr. Hulbut indicated, we do not have really any major issues with the staff report. We are prepared to accept its findings and conditions. We had two very minor provisions to conditions, which I'll get to in a moment. But we certainly submit on our justification statement. I want to thank staff, both the city staff as well as your staff for its review of this case. It comes to you, you know, as clean as a case can be with respect to the type of development and density that's being proposed. And we do have some, what I would consider fairly minor modifications to the Development District standards. Mr. Hulbut hit on those. They are found in finding seven of your staff report at pages 10 through 13. We thank staff for its support for those modifications. And I think we all collectively agree that those modifications are necessary to fulfill the, really, the vision and the goals of the sector plan to create high, dense, urban infill redevelopment adjacent to the University of Maryland. So we're excited for that and appreciate those recommendations. I don't know if you have a copy of our exhibit one, which-
We do.
Okay.
We do.
So they're fairly self-explanatory, Madam Chair. I will, the first one is condition one I is being deleted. You may recall that that condition was, that is really a carryover condition from the preliminary plan. Last week, that condition was deleted from the preliminary plan approval in support of Mr. McGinnis's letter that was in the record of the preliminary plan that the sharers that were requested or desired on Lehigh were not supportable by the university. So we're just asking, as it was on the preliminary plan, for that condition one I to be deleted for consistency. And then finally, condition one L. We had originally requested a modification. The sector plan requires LEED silver certification. Some other projects, recent projects in this corridor, the board and the city have been supportive of National Green Building Standard certification as opposed to LEED. Unfortunately, the sector plan, which was adopted in 2010, gained no flexibility. It says LEED silver and nothing else. So really, the modification that we're asking for is not to detract from that purpose and intent, but merely just to provide flexibility to have an alternative certification mechanism, which is the National Green Building Standard. We had originally requested that to be bronze. However, with working with the city, both Ms. Shum, Ms. Bader, and the city council, you know, this applicant has agreed to seek NGSP silver in the alternative of LEED silver. So we just revised that condition to be consistent with the promises and proffers that were made to the city to do NGSP silver instead of bronze. And we just thought it was appropriate for your condition to reflect that.
Good job, College Park. Okay.
And compliments to the applicant for rising to that-
Absolutely.
To that request.
Okay, touche, touche.
It's work for my client, if I may.
Okay, touche.
The final item, and I guess, really, the only point of discussion for this hearing, is your staff had recommended condition two. Let me turn my notes. Your indulgence, Madam Chair, sorry. I'm sorry, condition one R, which was to consider replacing the metal panels at the seven-story floor of the east facade, and that facade is the one facing Knox Road.
For everyone else, I'm just letting, that's on page 24, okay.
Twenty-four, stop, word. Kenny, if you could scroll down to, or if you don't have it, I can pull it up. Do you have our exhibit three?
We do.
Have our exhibit three?
What? Oh, now on the screen, okay.
If I can share my screen, again, I have it up on my end.
Is this it? I know, I know it's not. Okay, that's two? Wait a minute, this is the three, okay.
I think I've got mine up. Everybody can see that?
That's it, yep.
Yeah.
So what you're seeing on your screen now, it's labeled "previous design." That is actually the rendering, the building before you, condition one R request that we consider replacing the metal paneling at the seventh story, above the seventh story in this location here, with brick. And that was a request from the city. Ms. Shum and Ms. Bader can speak more towards that. And so, in working with the city, just move my camera so it looks like I'm watching everybody. And with discussion with the city, we went ahead and prepared this rendered elevation, which shows what it would look like if, upon consideration of adding brick above the seventh story, what that would look like in comparison to what's proposed, the metal paneling. This would be adding the brick above the seventh story. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Zalisco. And I think, you know, the applicant, just let me put it out there, Madam Chair, members of the board, the applicant is, you know, would- would prefer the metal paneling. However, courtesy of the city and his request, we did provide this rendered plan so that we could see what that looked like. Obviously, the will of the board will dictate which one is chosen, but we would like to have, or I would like to have, Mr. Solisco from Antunovic Associates speak to you all very briefly on why we, why they designed it this way with the metal paneling at the seventh floor, and obviously up to your discretion as far as which one is preferred, the brick or the metal paneling at the seventh floor. The third slide, just to, so I can conclude this exhibit, this is a zoomed-in rendering of the cornice feature, which there was language or consideration to increase that, which is what's shown here, with the soldier coursing, the dimensions of the metal of cornice, as well as the soldier coursing of the brick, to really accentuate that cornice feature, whether it's at the seventh floor or above, depending on your, your direction here today. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll stop talking and turn it over to Mr. Solisco, so he can just brief the board on the design as far as the metal paneling versus the brick, although we understand the city's preference would be to see the brick.
Okay. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jeff Solisco. I'm a senior principal with Antunovic Associates, and we're architects working with Course Spaces and man on this project. The version that you're seeing here, this was our original design, the, really, the main reason that we like this top floor of the building being these metal panels, is it really visually brings down the effect of height of the building from the street. So we just think it, the brick doesn't go as high, it doesn't feel as tall. So we think, just from the simple functional standpoint, that that's an important element to the building. But we also feel that that top floor, which wraps around the balance of the building, creates a real tension to the earth.
Wait a minute, I think we lost you.
Creates, I didn't hear the end of that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we lost him for a second.
Oh.
Mr. Solisco? I think you said creates tension.
Yeah, I hear you.
I hear him, too.
Yes.
Okay. We, we lost you for a moment. So can you, can you talk about how, you said that creates, I think you said tension. Attention?
Yes. I'm not sure if you're hearing me again.
Now we hear you, yes, we hear you, we hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, the, that element, that top element with this metal panel, kind of a modern look against the really lovely brick details that we have for the balance of the building, feel like it really creates attention in this building that you see from the street that is lost if that becomes a brick building above. It looks, it looks pretty good with it. We developed that other rendering, and if you want to, you know, look at that, it looks fine, but it definitely does make the building effectively feel taller, and we think it just loses that certain edge when that brick goes up. So that's our feelings, and we are happy to provide this other option, but we think it's better the other way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. I think we'll, we'll wait and hear from College Park, too, regarding their preference.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Was that it for you, Mr. Solisco?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tedesco?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for allowing me to share the screen. And as, as Jeff indicated, you know, working very closely with the city, I just want to be clear that we certainly appreciate staff's recommendation of a condition to consider that. You know, we, we have considered it, as you can see from the renderings that we prepared, showing both for comparison, not only for your edification and review, but we did that in advance for the city's review and edification. So, you know, whatever the will of the board is, we certainly will be prepared to follow in it here. And again, we, we thank you for your review of this application, and we certainly appreciate the positive comments after the video presentation with respect to the architecture of the building. And with that, I really don't have anything further. I'm happy to respond to any questions, and if there's anything that needs to be discussed after Ms. Bader, Ms. Schum speak, we're, we're here to respond as needed. Otherwise, we appreciate your-
Okay.
-time and attention.
Thank you. So thank you, Mr. Tedesco. So your whole team here is, at this point, for any questions or any elaboration as needed, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Of then, and let me make sure, I heard Mr. Pearlbutt, I think he said this at the beginning, but your applicant's exhibit one with the proposed deletion of B1I, and then the change from bronze to silver and L, you're in agreement with Mr. Pearlbutt?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so let's, let's, does the board have any questions of Mr. Tedesco or his team at this point, Madam Vice Chair?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Just one que, well, actually, two questions. I see the staff recommended only one charging station is the applicant. Thinking of any more than just one on the charging?
Commissioner Geraldo, excellent question. It actually came up during, in addition to working with the city of College Park, we also did a presentation to the town of University Park, and that comment came up. And so what the applicant has agreed to do is provide the one vehicle charging station that's been requested by the city and proffered by the applicant, but also to provide the wiring and the infrastructure for additional charging stations based upon demand in the future. So that will be incorporated with the construction within the two-level garage, with probably a close proximity to that designated charging station, but it will be, the infrastructure will be in place to expand upon that as need grows, which I think we all expect or hope it will. But for now, we're just going to have the one designated one, but be, have the facility to expand in the future.
So my question is in terms of the findings of everything, can, well, can we say to, to ensure that the infrastructure in fact is there?
I, I, we would be happy to, if staff, if the board wanted to include that as a finding in its resolution with respect to the applicant's proffer of providing additional infrastructure for future expansion, that, that's perfectly fine.
And the second one, was there any consideration to a green roof?
So we actually do have a green roof. I'll let David Vickel from Soltez explain that a little bit, because some of our stormwater facility and retention and quality control are up on the roof. So if, if David can maybe speak to that a little bit more, but yes, and again, we will be certifying this to a, to a silver standard, and so there are a number of other green initiatives being imposed, but David, if you could just address that quickly?
Thank you.
Sure. Actually, this is David Vickel with Soltez. It's correct, we, we do have a green roof. I mean, I don't know what else to say, but yes, there will be one as part of the stormwater management on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions.
Okay, so that concludes, that concludes our, our questions at this juncture. So I will now turn to the city of College Park, Ms. Schum.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon, Terry Schum, representing the city of College Park. And you should have a letter before you that indicates that the city council voted seven to one to recommend approval with conditions of this project. And we, I will let everyone know, as Mr. Tedesco intimated, that the city is indeed happy to say goodbye to the Knox boxes in this area. And after this project, there will only be maybe a handful remaining, and so this, this is quite exciting for the city to see this. And certainly, the Knox Road corridor will be changed in its entirety when these projects are completed. So I want to thank your staff for including the city's recommended conditions and their staff recommendation. That's very helpful, and we're appreciative of that. And I'd just like to make two comments, one about lead and one about the architecture. So in regard to, to lead, the city has spent a lot of time with various applicants struggling over, you know, the lead certification process versus other certifying processes. And we have agreed, at least among our city council, that NGBS silver is acceptable to the city. And I would just note, in your staff's recommendation, it seems like you're requiring only a scorecard or a matrix to be submitted, and in fact, the applicant has agreed in a city document to actually achieve NGBS silver certification. So I just want to make that clarification. As to the architecture, we really appreciate the applicant taking the time to render the suggestion, to make modifications to the, and it's really just to the Knox Road facade. As you can tell, this is, this is one large building separated by a lightwell. So on the west side of the lightwell, you have seven stories of brick and then two stories of metal panels. But on the east side, the majority of the facade is only seven stories. And we feel that it makes a much more balanced building to have that entire Knox Road facade at seven stories to be brick, and then pull a prominent cornice all around the building that would unify it. So if you stand on the campus side, you're looking at a nine-story building with seven stories of brick and two stories of metal panels. And then from the city or Knox Road side, you're looking at a, a seven stories of brick, and then on the western side, you, the building becomes taller and you see the two stories of metal panel again. So we think this makes a, you know, stronger building architecturally. Certainly, brick is a material that is used quite often on campus and throughout the city, and we appreciate the applicant willing to consider this. And I think the applicant has agreed that the building looks pretty handsome with these modifications, and I think is willing to construct the building in this fashion. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, otherwise I conclude my remarks. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Schum, one of the things Mr. Tedesco indicated was that, and he did, they did indicate, the applicant did indicate that they're willing to go either way. They have a preference for, to go forward as originally submitted, but they're willing, because they said that it, it cuts down on the appearance of the height. And I wanted to know your opinion on that.
So I don't necessarily think that it does that, because, you know, just behind, you see the nine-story portion of the building that actually faces the campus side. So I think it makes a stronger building, just to be more rational, having seven stories of brick for the entire building, and then anytime you go above that seven stories, you would have a prominent cornice and then a change in materials. And I think that, from an architectural standpoint, just holds up a little better.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's see, let's see if the other board members have any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
I, I don't have any questions, but I guess I would just say with regards to this condition we're discussing, our staff is only recommending consideration. So for me, I don't know that it's a determination we have to make, rather it's between the city and the applicant. Am I reading that incorrectly?
I think, I think we would do it, and I think that, I think it's us, and I think that's where the applicant was indicating, they'll, they'll abide by whatever our decision is, and they're willing to do that.
Well, no, but I'm saying the condition as written says the applicant should consider it. So if we adopt the condition as staff has outlined it, we're just saying we are agreeing-
Oh, you mean the silver, the silver.
No, no, I'm talking about one R.
Okay, one R, okay.
Yeah, so if that condition is adopted, this is Jeremy Pearlbutt for the record, then you would be up to the applicant and the city to determine that, or point the applicant to determine that. But if you modify the condition to require one way or the other, then that can be done as well.
Correct. I just wanted to be clear, the condition as stated would be affirming that the applicant should consider it, and it becomes a matter between the city and the applicant to resolve.
Let, let me suggest this, let me suggest this. I would, I would say that if we, if we, if we have a preference, then we should, we should state what our preference is in the motion and, and change that condition to whatever our preferences.
I, I understand that. I just wanted to be clear that the condition as written-
Correct.
-means it a determination currently between the applicant and the city.
Yes.
Right.
But I don't think, but if this is a detailed site plan, then we, I think we, I, I think we need to change the condition, is really what I'm saying, because we make that approval.
Commissioner Washington?
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification, but I, I disagree with staff to this extent. That says that the applicant will consider, they don't have, all they'll do is to consider it. They don't, and it's not-
I, I understand, I understand.
No, 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 lady, I'm not finished. I'm finished. I agree with you, but what staff said is that it would be up to, to the applicant and the city. And my read of it is it's up to the applicant. He'll consider it, and if they choose to do it so, and if they choose not to, they, they don't. But I don't think the city has any involvement in it.
Okay, so we're past, we're past this point, at this point. I think, I, I actually think the condition, the language in that condition needs to be changed, because we are approving the detailed site plan, and this is a component of the approval of a detailed site plan. So it's not, for me, it's not a consideration. For me, is we make that decision. So that, to me, that whatever way this board wants to go, that should not be optional at this point, it should be set forth in the condition. So I, I think Commissioner Washington is right that it needs to be, she pointed it out, and I think we need to change that language, whichever way we go.
That is all I was, that is the only point I was making, Madam Chair.
Got it. And the same, and I have a similar question with regard to condition B1L. That's why I turned to the silver, because it says, provide a matrix demonstrating that the National Green Building Standard silver is equivalent to lead silver. And, and-
No bronze level.
No.
The applicant's proposing revised language.
Silver, yes, and this is an applicant's exhibit number one. So they're proposing silver, right? And, and, and how it will be achieved. Okay, so how it will be achieved is, is the, is the key component there, because we want to make sure that if they are willing, they have proffered it already based on their conversations with the city, and we should go for this. Now, they can provide the matrix, but I want to make sure that that, too, is not optional. Okay.
Madam, Madam Chair, again, a clarifying statement. Applicant exhibit one does not provide any revised language. It essentially just deletes B1I and B1L. There is no revised language, at least on the copy I received.
Okay, mine does, L does-
Nor on mine.
Okay, so mine does have one L. Mine says, provide a matrix demonstrating National Green Building Standard, and bronze is crossed out, and silver is added. You don't, that's not what you have?
Everything I have shows it, it crossed out in its entirety. So there must be a newer version that we don't have.
Madam Chair, if I could be heard?
Okay.
I'm sorry. So there was, there was two versions of applicant's exhibit one. We sent one on Monday, the other one was on later on Monday or Tuesday. The one that you should have, or the one that's in your backup online, is the correct version, and that's the version that Madam Chair has.
Yeah.
I, I apologize for Ms. Washington or Mr. Geraldo's version being the older version, but just for the record, the applicant is only requesting one L. The only request to change is the deletion of bronze and the insertion of silver. And as far as the requirement of certification, part of your, part of the recommendation that you would be adopting, recommendation A6, I'm sorry, A5, requires to allow for National Green Building Standard silver certification. So we understand, the applicant is understanding that it must obtain certification. We are going to seek NGSB silver certification, and the condition would require us to demonstrate through a scorecard that's, that the equivalent of lead so, of NG, NGBS silver is the equivalent of lead silver, and how that's being achieved through the scorecard. So I think Ms. Schum's concern is addressed in staff's recommendation, A5. And just for clarification, one, condition one L should just be the deletion of bronze and the insertion of the word silver.
Got it.
And, and, and while I have the floor, I'll just take advantage of that with respect to the discussion on condition one R. Because it did say just consider, I do believe it's up to the board to determine which version should be picked. I mean, you all are approving the DSG, and if that requires one R to be revised, we would be happy to accept that. And I would just say, I don't think there's a wrong decision. I think both- I think both elevations are spectacular, and there's good reasons for both, which is why not to speak for Mr. Horvath, why that condition was written the way that it was, because I think even staff was going back and forth with respect to which version is ideal. And I think everyone just felt comfortable with letting the board make the final determination. We're happy to do both. We feel that the metal paneling is preferred. We understand, Ms. Schum, and the city --
Mr. Tedesco, we're past that point now. I appreciate that. Yeah, we appreciate that, but we're past that point now, because you made it clear you're either -- both renderings have, you know, there are pluses and minuses, so we're good, you're good with either one. I think Commissioner Washington made it really clear, and we did too, that we need to change that language. We're going to take consideration. We're going to pick whichever way we go. Okay. All right. So now, Ms. Schum, I don't think the -- oh, did I get to -- everybody asked Ms. Schum. Okay, so now, Ms. Schum, now that you have spoken for the City of College Park, and Ms. Bader, do you need to speak as well?
I can speak for Ms. Bader. Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. We did have Mr. McGinnis, the Ms. Skinner. You have your opportunity, if you needed to add anything.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just have a clarifying question again, because I don't have the most recent applicant Exhibit Number One.
Oh, okay.
Can you just verify that all the changes that Mr. Tedesco just covered are covered as part of applicant Exhibit Number One?
Yes, they are in applicant's Exhibit Number One. I have the correct one. And also, except for the fact -- except for, as you pointed out, with regard to 1R, that one we need to --
Yeah, that can be covered in the motion. I was just curious about the other item.
The other -- and yes, in their applicant's Exhibit Number One, B-1I. Do we -- can you pull that up? If -- I don't know if you can pull it up. Or, Mr. Tedesco, can you share your screen on that?
Yes, I can share my screen.
B-1I would be deleted, and B-1L is changed, deleting bronze and substituting silver. But we're going to put it on so that you can see it.
Yeah. Okay, no, it's fine. I just needed to make sure that it was captured. Okay, there we go.
Okay. And since there were two applicant's exhibits, let's refer as applicant's Exhibit Number One as amended. Okay.
Right. Madam Chair, I would like to be heard very briefly on 1R, just real quick, if the board's pleasure is to require the brick at the seventh floor.
Yes.
The only thing that I would ask is if that is what the planning board ultimately decides to revise 1R to, instead of saying, "Consider replacing," to make it mandatory to replace, I would ask that the last provision of that condition, after the comma where it says, "And provide a prominent cornice treatment around the entire building,"
Okay.
-- as required, be deleted, because we -- I think we all agree that the cornice is prominent as proposed, which is why I shared that Exhibit Three with the soldier coursing and the other. So I don't want to have an issue with certification of --
Okay.
-- that's not prominent enough.
Okay, so I'm going to ask -- say that -- first of all, let me get to Condition R for a second. Okay, let's see what we can -- okay. If we go with what College Park wants, we would say, instead of saying, "Consider replacing," we would just say, "Replace." If we don't --
If we say, "Replace," I don't sense for a --
Got it.
But then I would ask --
I got it. Okay. Mr. Tedesco, I was starting right in the beginning. Okay, right there, so "Replace." If we don't -- if we don't do that, then that whole condition can be deleted. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, so now -- but if we do go with "Replace," Mr. Tedesco, now tell -- what is it that you want at the end?
I would request and ask for staff's support that condition, if you go with it and you delete the word "consider" and just say "replace,"
Yes.
-- that the condition end after the word "building" on the third line. So it would say, "Replace the metal panels at the seven-story of the eastern side of the Knox Road facade with brick to provide a consistent seven stories of brick on all facades of the building," period, and then strike the rest.
Got it.
Because we believe the cornice feature is prominent.
Okay, so let me -- okay, so I'm going to ask for College Park to respond to that, but right now, our options for this condition are to substitute the word "replace" instead of "consider replacing." And if we do that, we would end at "building" on the third line. If we don't want to do that, we want to keep it as is, we just delete the condition. Okay. So now, Ms. Schum, do you care to respond to that?
Yes, the city would prefer the former, to change the language to "place."
That's not my question. My question is regarding to the rest of it, and provide a prominent cornice.
Oh, yes, yes, that's acceptable.
Okay, to delete that. Okay, if we go with -- okay.
To delete that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, so we're okay there. Now, I think I -- Ms. Skinner?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here. And I think Mr. McGinnis gave a good succinct summary of the university's support, and I would just add one thing that he's pointed out in his letters, and I think that is apparent, that the applicant and their team, including their council, act with professionalism and cooperation, and it is a pleasure to deal with them.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Okay. All right. Does -- okay, so that's everybody. Does the board have any questions of anyone? Madam Vice Chair?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Okay. And Mr. Tedesco, you were done, right?
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Schum, for your acquiescence of that deletion if the board goes that way. But yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the findings of staff in addition to the proffered finding by the applicant as it relates to ensuring that infrastructure for future electric charging stations is incorporated, and approve alternative development district standards A1 through 6 as outlined in staff's report, in addition to approving DSP-19054 along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report, and as further amended by applicant Exhibit One -- Exhibit Number One as amended. In addition, Condition 1R shall read as follows. Replace the metal panels at the seven-story top floor of the eastern side of the Knox Road facade with brick to provide a consistent seven stories of brick on all facades of the building, period.
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Is there discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
The ayes have it, four zero. I will just say this to Core Spaces. Look, we really look forward to your coming to Prince George's County, coming to the State of Maryland, but particularly Prince George's County. We heard that you are award winners every single year for your student housing. We trust and hope you get another one right here in Prince George's County for this beautiful building and your architecture, and we thank you for working so closely with the University of Maryland and College Park and us. So welcome and good luck to you. Okay, so we -- the board has one other item. Does anybody need a break, or do we need to go ahead? Can we go ahead?
Break.
Go ahead.
Okay, how's that for consistency? Okay, five -- okay, y'all got 10 minutes. Five minutes, five minutes, and we will resume. ... session from our 10-minute break. The next item that we have on our agenda is Item 11. I do -- I just want to make sure we have the right people that we need on here, and that is Mr. Bossi, are you on? Wonderful. Jill Kosak?
Yes, present.
Wonderful. Mr. Haller?
I'm present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Mr. Jubah?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay. Ms. Hancock?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Mesa?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Ryan?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Berger? I don't -- we may or may not get to that. There he is, Mr. Berger. We're unmuting you on our end, but we see you're there. I will come back to you, because you need to unmute. But Dr. Sabler, are you on?
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, wonderful. Well, you can cover it for Mr. Berger if Pete doesn't get on. Okay, we have Mr. Guckert?
Yes, ma'am.
Wes Guckert? Or Glenn Cook? I see Glenn Cook. Mr. Cook, you can cover for Mr. Guckert, right? We only need one of you. Okay. Richard Alter?
Mr. Alter, we saw you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful.
I'm here, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. George Warholt? Okay, did I pronounce it correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Byrd, Colin Byrd?
Could be eight or nine.
Mayor Byrd? Okay, Molly Porter? Okay, I'm going to keep going down the list. Todd Pounds? Because somebody needs to turn -- oh, there's Ms. Porter. I see Ms. Porter's name right there. Okay. She needs to unmute from -- Ms. Porter, you need to unmute from your side, but I see you're there. Is Todd Pounds on? Macy Nelson? Okay, Susan Walker? No, Susan Walker?
Oh, I'm here.
Wonderful, okay. Lauren Green? Bill Arleens?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, so he must be nine. Okay, thank you. That concludes my sign-up list. All right, Mr. Bossi?
Yes, good morning again. Or afternoon, Madam Chair, women and members of the planning board. For the record, I'm Adam Bossi with Urban Design Section. Before you is Item 11. This is a detailed site plan, DSP-19045 for Royal Farms in Greenville. And Madam Chair, in this matter, staff is actually requesting a two-week continuance to the board's October 29th agenda for this discussion, and this is to allow us to address an outstanding issue that was discovered in the past week with the technical staff report.
Okay.
In preparation for making this request, we did speak with the applicant's attorney, Mr. Haller, about our proposed continuance request, and it's something the applicant does not object to.
Okay.
Additionally, we did reach out to all the parties registered to speak, just to notify them that we would be making this request today.
And that's probably why some of them are not on. And, okay, so that's it for you, Mr. Bossi, right now, because I'm going to call everybody and ask them about the continuance before we entertain a motion on the continuance itself. It seems like you're saying it's something that needs to be clarified with the technical staff report, and you're -- am I understanding you correctly that it's something that's in everybody's best interest to get it straight with the staff report?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Haller, any comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I have no comment. We do not oppose the continuance.
Okay, thank you, because the request is from our end. Okay, so your team -- I won't call on your team, because you're all in agreement, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Byrd was not on. Molly Porter, representing the City of Greenville, do you -- are you okay with the two-week I see her right there. Is she unmuted on her end?
Yeah, well, I'll let her know.
Ms. Porter? Okay, I'll come back. And I didn't see Todd Pounds. Todd Pounds, are you on? Or Terry Ruby? Terry Ruby? Hmm, what? Terry Ruby? Macy Nelson? Ruth Grover? I think it's because we -- everybody was reached -- everyone was reached with regard to the request for a continuance. Susan Walker? Are you okay? Susan Walker, I know she's on. Susan Walker?
I'm here.
No, Susan Walker?
Hello, I'm okay with the continuation.
Thank you so much. Okay. Bill Arleens?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. So everybody is okay.
Wonderful. So everybody is okay. I think it's because we -- everybody was --
Okay, we need everybody else to mute their phones. So everyone that I called upon is in agreement with the two-week continuance, and I called every name that has been signed up to speak. I'm going to turn now to our board. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair, for a two-week continuance.
Second to October 29th, I believe.
Yes, okay, and let me make sure that for the record, we could not hear Ms. Porter, but she has so indicated that the city does not object to the two-week continuance. Thank you so much, Ms. Porter. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Nelson, you're on now. We called you -- anyway, we had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
But I, Madam Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Geraldo?
Both aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. This matter will be continued for two weeks till October 29th. Everyone take care and stay safe. So now, with that --
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hunt, are you on?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Mr. Hunt, is there any additional business to come before the planning board today?
There are no additional business items before the planning board today. Thank you.
Planning board is adjourned. We ask everyone to stay safe, take good care of yourselves, and we'll see you next week or two weeks from now. Take care.
Bye-bye.